Let's go to the meeting. The order, should that stand for the pledged regions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Newerdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly. Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present.
Okay, is there any public comments? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You have before you the authorization for payrolls for the town fund, general assistance, and the road department. You also have my reports on social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult family counseling, transportation, and financials and passports. I'm sure you all studied them very, very closely. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Newerdowski.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Okay, discussion on a potential action of the approval of the minutes. Need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of June 24th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, any questions regarding the minutes or any corrections that you feel are necessary? If not, roll call.
Trustee Newerdowski.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
Okay, presentations, we have BUC Bank here. If you guys would like to get up by the podium there and introduce yourselves and probably present your, present your, your, present your presentation. We have moved, just you guys, we have moved all our, all our accounts except for the operating account over to BUC Bank from Parkway. And there's been discussion of moving the operating account as well, too.
Good evening. My name is Matt Fink, Senior Vice President at BUC Bank's Mount Prospect Branch on Central Road. And my associate, Kim Becker, and I appreciate the opportunity to share our full-service banking proposal to the elected officials of the township this evening. We look forward to furthering our existing relationship that commenced a year and a half ago. And BUC shares the values of the township's mission to empower families and individuals by providing services that enhance their lives. I would like to thank the township administration staff, Paul Pioch, Isabella Monzo, and Erica Rens for their time and support today. Community banking and serving those needs throughout the Northwest suburban footprint has defined our careers over a few decades. And both Kim and I truly enjoy being personally invested in the success and outcomes of our customers. As a 156-year-old organization, our core value is service excellence in everything we do. And at BUC, we are honored to be nationally and locally recognized for our engaged culture of integrity and commitment to community development. The monetary gain provided by BUC, which Kim will further elaborate on, will serve the township well and will allow for additional funding for social services provided by the township. I would now like to introduce Kim Becker, Senior Vice President and Certified Treasury Management Professional, to highlight the specifics of our proposal today, and then we can allow time for any questions. Kim, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I know that the proposal, the full proposal was provided to you in your board packets. And I don't know how many have your board packet in front of you. Okay, because I, I do have, rather than go through the entire proposal, there's a lot of information in there that we don't need to highlight tonight. But getting to the main parts, you know, four or five pages, that really speaks to what we can do for the township. I do have condensed versions. Would anybody like a copy of a condensed version?
Yes. Go please.
Okay. Let's see if they, if I have them on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. So again, thank you again for this opportunity. We really appreciate it. We're excited to expand on the relationship with the township. We do have a few accounts with the township currently. And working with your administration, they've been wonderful in terms of providing us with additional information with your relationship with Parkway Bank that involves a few of the accounts, provided statements, analysis statements, and it provided me the opportunity to really gauge more of how those accounts are used, what's the structure, and what can we do for you. Okay? So the first page there of the proposal goes a little bit about my background. That's there. Been doing this a long time, not as long as BUC Bank's been in existence since 1968, but I've been doing it for a while. And actually, I was brought to BUC Bank last year by Sean Gallagher, our regional president. He and I worked together years prior. And the bank that I was at was acquired. When that was announced, he gave me a call, and here I am today. I joined BUC specifically because it really aligns with my values of what relationship management is, what customer service really is. Unfortunately, I think that far too often, as you see many acquisitions take place, you lose that service touch and you lose what that relationship really means. And so BUC has a unique model in that we work in teams. And so we don't have the silos built up where they're going to go ahead and compete with each other among the organization. We all work together to see how we can help the total relationship. So just a little bit about that. We also are unique in that we have a support group. It's not an 800 number that you would call. It's local numbers that you would call. It's a smaller team for the North Region area. And that allows the opportunity for the support team, when you're dealing with the online products and technology, they can get to know you more because there aren't so many people. It's just a random 800 number, and you get whoever you get. So we're pretty proud of that as well. We're also very proud that for consecutive years, a handful of consecutive years, we are nationally and regionally recognized as the best bank to work for, one of the best banks to work for, and healthiest banks to work for. So that, again, speaks to the environment that we're in. Okay? So in terms of looking at what you have, I like to do a scope overview and get a picture of where you're at right now. And then I like to provide an apples-to-apples comparison. So what you have with Parkway, you've got your dispersment account, your primary operating account. You also have a money market account, and that sweeps back and forth accordingly. Excess funds to go to the money market. If you need funds, go to the dispersment account, they can come back over. That rate is at .80%. You also have a money market account for the sewer fund. That rate also is at .80%. And then you also have the food fund, and that's a regular business checking account. So when we look at your collections, primarily, you deposit checks. You have a little bit of cash that you periodically receive, not that much, but you do have some. You have some ACH debits. Those are the electronic debits that are primarily linked to LexisNexis handling your credit card collections. So when they're settling, they're giving you the credit for the credit card, and then they're settling on the cost of using the credit card processing. On the dispersments, you're writing checks. You're also doing ACH payments as well, electronic payments. You do those for like Illinois Department revenue, other things of that nature that are more repetitive. And on occasion, you do use ACH origination. So ACH origination is where you take control and you're sending the funds out versus having somebody else take control and debit your account. Okay? Now, on the investments, again, you've got the money market, the sweep, money market paying .80%. And then you use online banking. And of course, most banks offer the same array of services tied into their online banking. We can accommodate all of that as well. And you have fraud protection in place. On the checking accounts, you have check positive pay to combat any check fraud that comes through the account. So when we look at the additional service for consideration, again, we can accommodate everything that you currently have, but we feel that we can do it better and more meaningful from a monetary standpoint for the township. So on the investment side of it, that money market, we're going to still do that sweep with the dispersment in the money market account, but we're going to pay you a rate of 3.50%. And what we recommend you do with that sweep target is target a $250,000 balance. Anything above that sweeps to the money market. And when it falls below that for payables that come in, it sweeps back to take care of those payables so that you're really letting your money work for you. Okay? On the following page, I actually demonstrate what that means in terms of numbers. So if we take a look at, we have got a side-by-side comparison with BUC Bank, Parkway Bank, and we look at the money market, average balance was roughly 3.9 million. That was in March of 2024. The statements, again, I wanted to keep an apples-to-apples comparison with the information that I have. So the interest rate at three and a half versus .80. The interest earns, you can see, is with BUC Bank, that would have been 11,374 and some change. And it was 2,599 and some change with Parkway. So there's a significant difference there of how we can assist you invest back into the community. Now, when we look at the fees, and I do have a page also that outlines line item fees and the comparison. On the fee structure, there's an earnings credit rate. Earnings credit rate is what we call fake interest, in a sense. It allows us to provide you interest to offset fees based on the balances in your checking account. However, it's not interest that is like interest income where you receive a 1099. It's only used to offset fees. Okay? So our earnings credit rate is lower. It's not as high as Parkway. However, we need, it's about $100 a month difference. But if you take a look at the interest income that you're receiving and you net out what that difference is, you're still way ahead of the game. Okay? So the monthly gain would be netting that out, 11,106 and some change. And the annualized gain would be 135,129 and some change. So if we look at that against what Parkway's annualized gain of 29,811 and some change, that's going to give you an annualized gain of 105,317. Any questions?
Is there any questions at this point? No.
No.
Okay. And then we take a look at the sewer fund, which is also a money market account. We would mirror that with the 3.5% as well. And that's going through the same methodology. That's going to allow you another 5,000 a year.
So on the sewer fund, that would be a money market. We would write checks directly from the money market, or would that be swept, have to be swept into dispersment as well, too?
On the sewer fund, it's right, it's just a money market account with Parkway Bank. We can certainly structure a checking account as well and do a sweep. Think that's something that we would follow up in greater detail with the administrative team and take a look at the type of activity. If you can get away with the six checks a month on the sewer fund, then I would say stick with it and leave everything in the money market. If you need to have more check writing activity, then we can certainly structure it.
Pretty consistent reserve there. Okay.
Okay. And then on the fall.
So at this point, we'd be talking about three different accounts. An operating account, which is your sweep dispersment. You've got the sewer fund where you would have in a money market. And then there's a straight just business checking account for the food pantry.
For the food, you, correct.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The food fund.
On the food pantry, the business and the business checking account, what's the, is there no fee over a certain dollar, dollar amount, or is there a fee on that?
On, on the food fund account? Yeah, it's $1,500 minimum balance, and you get up to 300 transactions a month. So it's well within the range.
As long as you maintain that minimum balance, which we will.
Right, in which, based on the statements provided, you do more than enough. Okay? And then also, just quick through here on other services to consider merchant services, BUC Holdings also owns First Tech, a premier payment provider. They contract with other banks as well. And so we can certainly take a look and see if there's any way that we might be able to help save money for you on the credit card acceptance processing. So something to consider. Remote deposit capture, what that does is allows you to have a scanner right in your office. It connects with your computer. You scan the checks that are coming in and uploads the images, transmits it to the bank, and you don't have to take the checks to the bank to see a teller. We create a teller right on your desktop. Okay? And then fraud protection, again, you have check positive pay for check fraud. I would also recommend ACH positive pay for unauthorized electronic debits, ACH debits that hit the account. You have 24 hours, according to NACHA rules, to return a fraudulent item. If it's not returned within 24 hours, we can send it back to the originating bank it came from. It's sent in a different way. It's sent as a claim, and we can't control whether or not those funds are recouped. So highly important, I feel, to implement ACH positive pay. And again, the fee structure on the following page shows an account analysis comparison. So I did, again, March 2024, side-by-side comparison. It outlines the general account services, the receivable services, the remote deposit capture. You don't have that currently. It shows what the fee would be there with the 60 a month, your ACH origination, your sweep, your fraud protection services, and the information reporting.
Okay, so any, any questions?
Any questions?
I think at this point, you know, we already, like I said, we already have the sewer fund and the food pantry fund, and then there's a separate community empowerment fund, small account over there as well, too. The, the big decision that would be made would be the operating account, and we would go as, we would, if we moved it across, be part of a whole package that we'd be doing in terms of all those, all those accounts. So if you guys would take the time to look at this information, and then we will, it'll be on the agenda for next month, and a decision will be made at that particular point. I indicated to them that the reason that we were moving was because we just didn't feel we were getting the attention that we, we wanted at times. It's not like we wanted a lot. We weren't getting sponsorship on different programs. And BUC was a very big supporter of the community empowerment fund, the fundraiser we have every year over 34 is in Mount Prospect. And, and also, too, I just, I, I'm familiar with their staff, and a very, very, very good staff. So we, this would be a, this would be a big step, the operating account, because that's our primary, largest account. And, and that would mean a complete relationship with them from a banking point of view. So look through this. If you have any questions, give me a call, and I will then answer it or reach out to them to get further information. And I may want to just come in sometime and sit down with you anyway.
That would be wonderful.
Talk through it after I've had a time to look at it a little bit more, too.
Absolutely. That would be wonderful.
Okay. And you're, you're out of the Mount Prospect office, then, to both of you?
I, I go back and forth between Schaumburg, Mount Prospect, and where business takes me. So we can set it up that's convenient for you.
I'm in Mount Prospect every day.
Right.
I'll coordinate with Kim accordingly.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I would invite you to stay for the meeting, but that would be cruel and inhumane treatment. Okay, those are presentations. Are there any other presentations? I don't believe there are. So we'll go to the reports, the elected officials' reports. The assessor is not here. She had written for that?
Yeah.
I must have missed that.
Yes.
She has a written report. Any questions about the written report? You can always give Connie a call, too, if something jumps out at you. This is, next year is a triennial year, which means we'll be particularly busy because they'll be reappraising for our area again. I think it'll be particularly significant year for those people that are living in District 57 and the Mount Prospect Park District, because both of those will be putting referendums up. So with the triennial and with those two referendums that they pass, the year $400,000 home, we'll be probably paying 1,000 to 1,500 more a year, which is rather substantial.
Lot of money.
So we, it will be, I would assume, a very active year next year. There is no further information on the legislation. If you remember, there was legislation out there whereby if it passed, the boards would be able to, to eliminate the position of assessor and make it a contract position, where you could hire someone who had the credentials. You could hire someone from another township. I mean, townships could get together and have two assessors. I mean, they could share an assessor, I guess. But it would be a contract assessor. The only problem with this is the way it's written, you could do away with the position when you felt that your assessor maybe wouldn't win, and then you could put it back when you think your assessor could win. I mean, there's, there's, there's room for political gains. But the reason for this was because people, townships were experiencing difficulties in finding qualified people to either run for the position or to fill vacancies because it requires that certification. And people just don't automatically have that certification. And then there's a cost to it that unless you're a political party or, or a, or unless you're an employee of the township, you will, it won't be funded. You're, you're paying out of your own pocket, which is about 2,500, $2,500 for four classes, four online and two down, downstate. So it is a little bit of a conundrum. I don't know if this legislation is the right legislation, but, but there is, there is legislation out there being kicked around to deal with, with that issue. Personally, I feel it should be treated the way, same way the road, the road and bridge department's treated, that if, and the highway commissioner, that if it is decided that it would be better to go to a, a employee who would report to the board, directly to the board, that it would be a referendum, that they would hold a referendum that be voted on by the, by the, by the voters in the township. To me, that would be more appropriate than the board just arbitrarily deciding they're going to do away with the position. And, and that, that, that elected official assessor would continue until the end of her, his or her term, but then it would be contract thereafter. But, like I said, then you could come back and put it back again when it's here. So there needs to, there needs to be some discussion. The Assessors Association, obviously, is opposed to it. There is another discussion about how in Cook County, they shouldn't require the certification because they don't actually assess. They really manage a department that does appeals and exemptions and, I mean, it's a very unique and valuable source, but it doesn't require the same assessment skills. But the Assessors Association and Connie's argument is that they need to understand the process to be able to fill the job. Even if they're not doing assessing, they need to, to understand it. So there's, you know, there's, there's multiple, there is a problem, an issue, and I don't know if the solution is out there yet. But there are several issues that are being discussed, and there is some legislation.
How soon do you think that's going to come to fruition?
I would think that probably it'll be, well, I, I don't think anything until after the election. I mean, I would think it'd be sometime after the election, and it's going to be on how aggressive, how aggressive some townships that are having difficulties push this with their legislatures. And how aggressive the associate, the Assessors Association is in, in, in defending their position. You know, something will be done. I just don't know if this is what it's going to be. Okay, so you got the assessor's report. I just wanted to make you guys more aware of that development. Clerk's report?
We just had one email that Corey Dewey received asking about information about our mental health program, social workers and counselors. So Administrator Piac got back to her, letting her know that would be considered a FOIA and just saying if she could send detailed information of what she wanted, he would get that for her. So that.
Has she submitted it yet as a FOIA?
No.
No.
Well, so. And then we had the parade, which I was not there, but I heard it went well, and we were able to hand, give out our new informational handouts, which is great. And we didn't run on a candy.
All right. The ones that were in the parade, the.
Yeah, September, please mark your calendars. September 21st, Saturday, is, I think it's at 2 o'clock, is the Elk Grove Village Hometown Parade. And we will be in that one, too. So if you know if you can come, let me know. We had a good turnout.
Yeah, we had a good turnout at the, thank you for the job you did in getting that set up. I thought we had a good turnout. I thought we were well received. And I thought it was a very good idea to hand out those brochures, of which some people were more aggressive than I was. That was good. I just like to say, I like to be the nice guy, just give the candy out. But, but I appreciate the turnout, particularly families and everything, too. I thought that was, that was really good. The, I think, anything else on your side there?
That's it.
Okay. On the supervisor report, I think before I get into the, the little specific things that I'm going to make you guys aware of, I've asked Izzy to be able to update the board on two things. One is a District 57 IGA, so relating to the services, youth services, that we would be providing them. And then an update on what we're doing with District 59. If you remember, we don't have an IGA with them. They don't require that. But the services we're providing this year after last year is, is going to change. So I've asked her to just to explain a little bit about 59 and then what we're doing with 57. And then after that, there's another thing, but I'll let you go with this first.
Okay. Good evening. So I don't know how well aware you are of the things that are changing for our youth services department, but we've been working really hard the last year with Renee to kind of update the structure of how we provide services. So one of the main things that we did is work with District 59. It's our biggest school district in the township, to be able to kind of structure a top-down approach to allow our services to truly target those students that needed them. So we would get phone calls throughout the school year, and it would be teachers or principals who would call and say, I'm having a really hard problem with these tier three students. Could you come in and run a group? And we would, of course, do that. So you can imagine across 10 schools, that gets kind of complicated. That schedule looks a little bit difficult. And we're not really sure if we're solving the problem because we're getting these from teachers or principals. So George and I, Renee and Paul, kind of sat down and thought about this a little bit for a while. And in the beginning of last school year, we had a couple of different conversations with School District 59, and we decided to work from administration down. So they have a lot of really nice software, and they test their kiddos in a lot of different ways. So they, they're able to identify tier one, tier two, and tier three students, and then dispatch us properly to run certain groups for certain kiddos. We did this for the entire year. We allocated direct service hours so we could calculate how much time we could spend in schools versus how many different groups we ran on site. During the entire year, we ran those groups in semesters or six weeks or eight-week intervals, depending on what the need was. The district would reach out and say, hey, this is the school that you need to go to. This is the group we'd like you to run. The approach worked really well for our department because we were able to predict the need. And we were, we knew for a fact that we were solving certain problems because we weren't being dispatched to different schools for different reasons. It was kind of a targeted approach to truly help them move forward with some of those situations they were having. In the meantime, we were trying to figure out how we can expand this to the additional school districts that we have, which is School District 57 in Mount Prospect. Smaller school district, different needs. Since it was successful with District 59, we went ahead and had a meeting this summer with District 57 and kind of told them what we did and what it looked like and that we could tailor to do the same thing for them. Maybe it would look a little different because their needs were a little bit different. And that's what happened. So District 57 came back and asked that we create an official IGA that would kind of outline what we were able to provide versus what we needed from them. So we've drafted an IGA. George has looked at it. School District 57 is looking at it now. And we're hopeful to be able to present it to you at the next board meeting. But basically, it just states that we would receive directions from the district where our services would best be utilized. So we have kind of a menu of groups. We provide our core groups, whether it's Girls Empowerment, Social Skills, or things like that. And we would go in and run those sessions, whether it was six-week sessions or eight-week sessions. So kind of similar to what we did with District 59, and we're going to tailor it to District 57. In the meantime, the needs of District 59 have shifted. They hired additional staff to kind of help with the social, emotional learning. They were having some issues with social workers and things like that. So they've been able to target that. And it's truly a good thing because their needs were so great that our youth services department couldn't tackle the entirety of it. So it was kind of like putting a Band-Aid on some of those problems. So they're going to tackle that in, from the inside, which is good. And we're going to help develop a newcomers curriculum. So all of those service hours that we were providing last year, we're not losing. We're going to continue to work with them, but we're going to use those. We're going to continue to work with them, but we're going to use those social skills groups and other groups to help the newcomers kind of get used to School in America and things like that. They have a really big influx of newcomers in that school district, and it's been very difficult for them to kind of come to grips with their new reality. And our social skills groups, which is usually taught to help kids kind of join the mainstream population, would really help a newcomer classroom. And they've separated those, so they've taken all the newcomer kiddos and they've put them into a different schedule, so it's easier to identify what kids need the help. So Renee is currently developing a curriculum. It's going to be presented to the school district in August, and then we'll know exactly what the need is. But it truly allows us to then sit down and say, okay, we're going to do five service hours directly to 59. Let's say five service hours directly to 57. How much time do we have to run our onsite groups? Do we need additional hands-on deck? Are we able to meet the need of the community? Because it's ever-changing, particularly with youth services. So it's good. It gives us really good results, and it gives us a good handle on what's going on and where we need to be at what time. So I like it. And I hope that when you see the IGA, you'll kind of see what we're working with and how flexible youth services can truly be to the community.
So part of the reason why we pursued a relationship specifically with the administration of 59 and 57, starting with 59, hearing aids are acting up here, sorry. The reason we pursued that was because it seemed like our program was not focused, that we were not, we didn't, we weren't, as a manager, weren't sure where we were allocating resources and how we were allocating resources and whether it was the most efficient and whether it was what the schools really needed. So what we did is we pursued a different tact for how our youth services provides assistance to the schools, top-down, going through the administration, telling them what we had, and then giving them so many hours and they allocate it, and then we provide those services. And like she said, 59, we started out with a sort of a broad palette. They came back, said they didn't need the broad palette. They wanted a specific service, and then we give them a couple hours if they need something special, like a bowling class or something. 57, we don't know yet, but it seems like they're more interested in the broader palette, but they want an IGA. So that's where we are kind of in there. And I feel very good about that because we're now are seeing what we're providing to the schools, and we're getting feedback in terms of what's needed and how it's needed, and then we can manage the hours that our staff has in terms of providing service to the schools as well as providing onsite programs and so forth. And if we add something, we know what that's going to add in terms of hours and what that's going to add in terms of, what that's going to add in terms of the, how it interfaces with the other things we're doing. So I feel much better, and Izzy's done yeomanly work on this, getting this structured a little bit more. I mean, our staff, Renee is there, I get constant compliments in terms of how well she facilitates and the work she does. We just needed to have that, what she did, more understandable, structured, and measurable. So that's where that is. The other one I wanted, and so next month, we will be bringing forth, probably be able to address, hopefully address the IGA with their changes, and we can make a recommendation if we accept it or if we go back with more changes, we'll have to see.
Why did they request that we enter into an IGA? And what is the benefit for them, for us, and would it benefit us, 59, to also have an IGA?
59 didn't require it, and we didn't feel the need for it, but 57?
Okay, so they came back after our conversation and asked for one. We spoke with Jason, who is our attorney, about creating one. We kind of gave him what we thought should be included in it. We asked some questions of District 57. I think it's mostly to structure it. They don't work very closely with other outside entities. District 57 is well-known to work with people like Kenneth Young Center and other government entities, other nonprofits continuously, so they have a different kind of approach to these things. District 57 is a smaller district in a different area, and I don't think that they have a lot of partnerships like that. So I think part of it was that it's new to them, and they wanted kind of everything laid out. And I actually prefer it this way. I think it puts the responsibility on them as much as on us to really work together and provide both of those ends of the story. So we're there when they ask questions. We're there when they need something. And then they are also providing us with the needs, because we are allocating five hours, six hours, seven hours, let's say, to this particular program. If they don't have the need for it, we've wasted our time coming up with a curriculum when really we could have ran a different group or provided those services to a different school. So it puts the responsibility on everybody, and I, you know, right now, we're in the drafting process of this. We've never had an IGA with a school district either, so it is a little bit different, but you'll see it at the next board meeting. I think it's great. I think it allows everybody to be accountable.
I think, when you think about it, we are providing a service, we're providing a government service to a government body. So in that case, it really is an under-governmental agreement, and that provides a structure in terms of what is provided, how it's provided, and sort of the legal arrangements in terms and if there's any compensation or anything associated with it. So it does, at first I was surprised, but when more I thought about it, it makes sense. And we may, we'll see how this goes, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll approach 59 and say that we should have an IGA as well too, just to give it more structure and just to clarify things a little bit more. But for right now, we're, one, it doesn't have one-on-one will. The other issue that I wanted to address that we will then probably bring up on the agenda next for action would be the, an ordinance providing sort of the structure for the allocation, the reallocation of general assistant funds. There was legislation that allows us to use GA reserves for other purposes. They, the intention was for each township to have an ordinance which spells out specifically what we are, what we'll use it for. So this ordinance that we're putting together that has not been finalized yet would define what those funds can be used for, and in a sense, what can the supervisor apply those funds for to do in other areas. They'll all be related to mental health in one way or the other. They'll all be related to that and assistance and the financial assistance in mental health. They'll all be structured around there. This doesn't have to be this way, but I, while I'm supervisor, I'm going to limit it to one-time items. In other words, it's something that you allocate the funds for, you use it, you're done. I don't want to use these to create something that has a long-term financial commitment to, because I don't know what funds we'll have from the GA going forward. I just want to use them when I know it's money I can allocate to these things, and I don't want to have a long-term commitment to it. So we're doing a ordinance, and if you want to talk a little bit more about where we are on that?
Sure. So I believe you were presented with the full text of this public act last month in your board packet as well as this month in your board packet, but on page four, there's a section, it's Section 6-11A, and it states that a local governmental unit such as a township may provide general assistance or provide assistance under its general assistance program under a service that complies with Section 8513 of the Township Code. Before a local government unit provides assistance under this section, the board of the local government unit shall adapt a policy providing which services are eligible under this section of the Township Code. So lots of numbers, doesn't really make a lot of sense when you read it in that way, but basically, the bill was signed in June of 2023, and then it was effective as early as January 1st of 2024. And it changed a couple of things, one of them being eligibility for general assistance, which is something that you, as the board, don't have to worry about as the township supervisor is in charge of that, and our GA staff goes to all of the training, so they're able to kind of provide the most effective assistance for that. But the section that is kind of interesting and very new to us is this Section 8513, which allows the township to expand funds directly or enter into a cooperative agreement or contract with any other government entity or not-for-profit corporation to provide any of the following services to residents. And that's when it lists the categories. So those categories are public safety, environmental protection, public transportation, health, including mental, behavioral, eye, dental, and other, recreational libraries, and social services to the poor and aged. So what it ultimately states is that the township board could write an ordinance and create a policy allowing the township supervisor to allocate funds or expand funds under these categories. As Supervisor George Bussey stated, he's very particular on how he would utilize these funds, but it isn't limited to that. So there are townships that have utilized it to support an additional counselor and that salary. For example, something that we may think about doing is buying a new township bus, and we could allocate funds to buy that bus so that doesn't come directly from the general town fund. Let's say you're limited in funds, and you don't want to spend $35,000, $45,000, $55,000 on a new bus. You could then take some funds from the general assistance fund and use those for that, and that would go under public transportation or social services for the poor and aged. It kind of fits both of those categories. So as long as it falls under one of those categories, we are allowed, the board is allowing the township supervisor to use those funds for those services. It's kind of an interesting way to approach general assistance, but I think it is a step forward in what general assistance was allowed to do for a very long time. You know, down south, I think they have more general assistance cases, but up here, the townships are often limited in what they could use those funds for. So this kind of opens the doors and allows us to take some of those funds and use them in these particular directions. So we will write an ordinance, and then we can create a policy to outline which categories you would be comfortable allowing the township supervisor to use those funds, but it is a very, very new and nice way to take some of those funds and use them for very good things. And allow us to truly kind of approach the needs of the community with new programs. If you utilize it internally without going into contracts with other government entities or nonprofits, you can either expand staff or services or programs. You could use it under any of those categories, so.
When we went through these, I want to keep it relatively broad, but at the same token, we won't include something like library because our library is a bookshelf out there, and we don't really, there's not a need for us to be allocating GA funds to a library, given that we just have a small, little community one that people donate books to. I probably, there's one or two of those other categories we will not include because they just aren't really pertinent to us, so I don't want to have them in there. Just, yeah, just there's no need, so we shouldn't put them in there. And like I said, when we do allocate funds under the other areas, one, I have to make sure there's adequate reserves still, that I'm not depleting the fund. The reason why this is happening, because the reserves at some townships have become huge, and there's no reason for it to be sitting there unused. So I have to make sure, one, that the, that there is still adequate reserves from a historical point of view, and two, as I said, I'm going to limit it to one-time items where you buy and done, whether it's a bus or whether it's software for the bus routing or something along that line. Or, you know, I mean, anyway, something along that line. So we'll have this written up, we'll run it by Jason, and should have that for approval next month. You guys, when you get these things and you read through them before the meeting, if there's something that you feel that, hey, we should not, this should not be included, or you're missing this, this should be included, you know, give me a call, and we can address some of these things before we get into meeting. We can talk one-on-one. We just can't, Open Meetings Act, we can't talk as a group, but one-on-one, if you have a problem or an issue, give me a call so that we can address that ahead of time. Okay? Okay, thank you, Izzy.
Thank you.
Izzy's doing a really great job. I told Paul he can leave early if he wants. We. He will. The trouble is, he will. He's got a new place down south that I think he's chomping at the bits to get down to. Okay, other items I wanted to address here quick, is you saw from a construction point of view, we finished the blacktop and the striping. I think it looks really nice. We still have, in the storage, the food storage in the back, we still have shelving that we're in need to install or put in there, and that is being, we're reaching out to the, Romero's reaching out to the company, trying to make arrangements to get the shelving in there so that we can, so that we can use the space, that we can use it more effectively. And the second thing we're doing is organizing the space for the medical closet, medical storage, equipment storage, which, by the way, that, you know, that's used rather extensively, and, but we get a lot of donations too. It's interesting, though, certain items we're always kind of light on, and others we got way more than we need, is how that kind of goes. But there'll be a storage back there for that along with the food. Otherwise, the, Izzy was able to arrange, to purchase the houses. They're going to go up back there on the course. Romero's going to paint them and assemble them, and there'll be some painting, and we'll give them names like Police Station or Fire Station or the likes. And so they'll be, they'll be out there. She's also, we've also had some landscaping put in. It's not extensive, but over time, hopefully, it'll grow in. But we do have an issue with the grass, which is really turning to be more weeds than grass. So they're out, were they out today spraying?
They were out on Friday. I think they'll be back this.
Okay. So we've got to get that taken care of before the grand opening. That would, that would not look good to have, you know, our bike safety weed patch. So those are things that are going on from a construction point of view. We're getting very close to the end here. I think that's really good. I mean, this has been a long process. It has been, I think it has really produced some outstanding results, but it also would be nice not to have those expenses, have those behind us and be able to sort of focus away from construction for a while. Events coming up is that we have the Manufacturers, Cook County Manufacturers Grant Seminar, I guess you'd say, on Friday morning. We're a co-host with, we're hosting it here, but we're a co-host with Cook County Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Morrison, and Commissioner, I forget who the third one is. Three commissioners. Yeah. So it's a, it's a grant program that county has to assist manufacturers, particularly smaller companies, to be able to improve their operations, expand, and so forth. And it should be, we have 45, 50 people signed up for it, and we'll also use this as an opportunity, not just to host, but they're familiar with who we are, but also to promote our job board and our employment services here as well too.
I saw the mayor on there.
Yeah, that's right. Oak Grove Village, several commissioners, Cook County commissioners, and us will be at the event. Our cosponsors, we're hosted here. We'll have some breakfast stuff brought in, I think, and then, and then, I think we have, don't we, are they providing or are we providing?
So Commissioner Kevin Morrison, Sean Morrison, and Maggie Trevor.
Yeah, Trevor. So and then we'll have an opportunity, I'll have an opportunity to thank people for being here and for being able to co-host, but also then mention our job board and John's employment services that he offers. All right, we got the parade, which we mentioned. We've had the, on the grand opening is the 17th? 14th, 14th of September. That morning is the shredding with Mont Prospect Lions Club, and then that will be from like 9:00 to 12:00, and then this will be from like 12:00 to 12:02? 12:02. Invitations, I didn't, you have to give me the invitation list to get it, you forgot. And I need to, I need not, then not to forget that. But we have invitations out to a lot of the community leaders, and also that, we're also having in the newsletter on the website, and we'll put press, we'll put some press releases out to try to get people here. And I think at the next meeting, Izzy will explain a little bit more about, you know, food truck and the different stuff we're going to have here to kick this off for the challenge corps, for the bike safety, but also for the challenge course, and we'll have the youth services space opened up, cleaned up, and opened up, everything for people to see. All right? Then, let's see, then the other one is the conference, the November conference. Don't forget that. That's in November. I forgot the exact date. It's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday this year. It's not on Sunday, correct? Pretty sure that's, I don't think they're starting on Sunday. I think they're starting on Monday now. They moved it back a day for whatever reason. So it will not be on Sunday. It'll be, starts Monday evening, Tuesday, and then Wednesday. So that's going to affect a workday, unfortunately. Instead of having one workday, you're, you get, you know, Sunday and Monday, you're going to have two workdays that are going to be affected by it.
What is that?
When is that?
November, I have to look here real quick. It's the beginning of November, let's see, like eleventh, eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth, starts on Veterans Day, eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth. Which by the day, by the way, on Veterans, our meeting that month, we will be recognizing a number of veterans that were nominated or provided to us or sent to us by the, two different VFW houses, and they will be recognized on our newsletter and in our website, and then at the meeting in November, we will recognize them for their service. Okay, that's that. Then personnel, we are, we are looking at establishing a resident services coordinator that handles passports and licenses, and that front conference room may be converted into a resident services office, sort of like the assessor's office with the counter and everything. The demand for those services, particularly passports, has skyrocketed, and so I think it's very valuable. And Izzy's working very aggressively on that in terms of the position as well as the facilities. We are looking for another caseworker, as you know, Kasha resigned and moved to another job. She was a great asset for us, so we're looking for a replacement now, is there any news on that?
They're interviewing now, they've had a couple of good candidates. Should have a decision by next week.
Okay. So that is, you know, we have Cory and Andrea and then another caseworker, we have three right now, and they are, they're actually, their caseloads have expanded, they're okay right now, but if they expand a lot more, we may have to look at another caseworker. It's across the board. The demand for what we're doing is just, it's surprising how dramatically it's expanded. You know, the food pantry now is over a thousand a month now, consistently over a thousand families a month. The other thing is, we did have a part-time therapist brought on board, Jeanette, what her last name?
Porta.
Okay. And I'd like at the next meeting to maybe have her come to get introduced to the board, as well as if we do hire a new caseworker, the new personnel, if we could, in the last couple of months, if we could have them here to be recognized by the board. And then we are looking for a youth services associate director to work with Renee, and she would have the responsibility as well for bike safety and the challenge course, those specific items. Well, for bike safety for sure, possibly challenge course. Ed has resigned, he stepped down, and so at this point, we're looking for, we're already looking for associate director. I'm not sure what we're going to do if we'll have another, if we'll bring another part-time in to be the challenge course coordinator like we were going to move him back to for various reasons. So right now, we're looking for a full-time associate director, and I'm not sure what we're going to do with the part-time at this point. We may, may not. Okay, is there any other questions of me at this particular stage?
No.
Dale?
No.
Okay. Okay, I think that's my report then. Can I get a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye. Okay, we'll go to old business. The one there, item there is the proposed changes to the agency grant committee, the policy. What's being changed there specifically is the title. It'll be, it will be the Mental Health and Wellness Grant Committee, which I think reflects better what it is and what we're doing. Other change will be the composition. We'll go to clerk being the chairman, one trustee on a rotating basis every year, take turns of being on the committee, and then the two youth services and social services directors, and then three residents, not two, but three. And so I think you're going to have, you've got, the one, one person will still be there, but you're going to have to replace Scaletta.
After the election.
After the election, and find another one then.
Yeah, so I need one new one for this season, yeah.
Right. Okay, and then, and that is the composition, and the other thing is added, which we've discussed, is a mid-year review and report that the deputy or associate director is, administrator's going to, would be managing to hold these, the agencies accountable on a mid-year basis. In other words, instead of waiting just to the end of the year and looking at what they did or didn't do, we're going to ask, require a mid-year, a six-month report as well, too, in terms of what they've done, how they've spent the money, how much they've, how much of it they have invoiced, and that would, that will provide us a little bit more idea. That information then I think will be helpful to the board when they meet to allocate for the next year, because at that point, we don't know the full end of the year situation. So I think this was Izzy's, another one of Izzy's ideas, I think is, makes a lot of sense in terms of holding the agencies accountable, given that we got six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in money that's going out to these agencies that were, that are supposed to be supporting, providing services to our residents, are supposed to be working closely with us in terms of coordinating things, and are supposed to be using the money efficiently and effectively. And by having this mid-year review and Cory, I mean Izzy's putting together the package that they would need to provide and holding them accountable for, to respond to us in appropriate ways, I think is going to increase the accountability that we, and our fiduciary responsibility for the taxpayers' dollars. Let's see, so that's the, those are the three primary changes. Are there anything else, Izzy, or that's it?
No, it is important to mention that the timing of the six-month review is really interesting because they need approved and then it goes into the fiscal year, so April to September is that six months, and then you'll do the review in October, and when you, the applications are due November one. So you start to review those and remember, it's fresh in their mind, they know everything that these agencies did, you know, for six months when they were allocating those initial funds, are they invoicing, are they doing what they said they were going to do. So the timing did for the six-month review. It comes right before applications are due following fiscal year. So as we continue year after year, you'll really get the full story every single time.
Okay. All right, so is our motion approved, the agency grant committee changes, policy changes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, a motion, a motion to accept in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye. Okay, new business, proposal to issue invitation to bid notice for used senior and disabled bus. Do you have anything, Paul or Izzy, you want to say about that?
Yeah, on that, if you look on item number eight, it's actually the fifth page back, two pages aren't numbered, but we want to delete, strike item eight. It was something that we put in the previous bid document for a bus, and they don't do that, so we just thought if we throw it out there, again, they're going to say no again with our companies that moved the element, so whoever would be in that position, so we're just going to, we'd like to take that out.
Okay.
Item eight?
Once again, once again, as we, we're at a point, I'm sorry, don't, this is.
You said item eight, right?
Item eight.
About?
Item eight?
Item eight, yeah.
About the loner bus?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
But the, but we were staying opportunistic about adding another bus so that we can get into a rotation schedule, a capital replacement schedule every so many years, and we needed to get another bus into the cycle. We were staying opportunistic, we weren't just going to go out and pay eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand for a bus, which a new one would be, and it appears there may be a bus out there that would meet our needs, so we're going to go with a, put a bid, put a, a pack, bid package out there so that we can get, we can get the feedback if this, if, we can get a bid back, and if it's appropriate or a price that we can afford, we can, that'll be, that'll come to the board and we'll approve it or disapprove it. I mean, and if it isn't, if the price is not within the range that we'd like it to be, and for me, it'd be under fifty thousand, then we don't have to accept any bid. But there seems to be something available out there, so we're putting the package out to see if they'll respond in a way that we could take advantage of it. Okay, so that is proposal to issue, I guess, is there, is there a motion to approve the proposal?
So moved.
Second.
They moved, seconded. Is there any discussion on the proposal?
No.
Okay. If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye. What is the, when will the bids, when is the deadline for the bids?
What's the what?
The deadline for the bids?
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth, okay, okay, good. Next is the tentative budget for the two thousand three, two thousand four TFGA sewer, town fund, general assistance and sewer, as amended. Paul, you want to, you want to, oh, I'm sorry.
Erica.
Come on up.
Paul, Erica.
Erica, her.
And has all the numbers.
Financial director, has all the numbers, they can change them as needed.
Yes, so do you want me to go through each one that we had to make a change to?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because there are quite a few, but, so we had to make the changes on the budget because we went over the ten percent for our transfers of appropriations, so we had to do an amended budget. So for the first line item that we changed was for our telephone, we went over a hundred and fifty-three dollars. Utilities, we went over three hundred and seven. Travel expenses, we went over a hundred and sixty-six. For training, we went over two, about twenty-five hundred, but that was, Mandy was going to some social media trainings, lots of toy conferences, et cetera, so I think that was just something that we'll have to think about for next time, so we have enough in there. The next one is in contractual services for rental, we just went over five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Publication and newsletter, we went over six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. That's our newsletter, that's our press, well, not our press releases, but our postings in the journal and topics, so that's just, you know, something that went up a little bit. Accounting services, we were over almost, almost ten thousand dollars, but we had gotten new software, the accounting software, so that put us over budget, and that's also, our audit is in that same line item. Next, we have, still in contractual services, public relations and advertising, we were over ninety-seven hundred, and that's because of our new website expenses, and Vicarious is also in that same thing, the same account, so with those going up, that's why those changed. Next, in commodities and miscellaneous, we went over our maintenance supplies by almost fourteen hundred. Our food pantry truck was six hundred and fifty dollars. And then our biggest line item that we went over, which is what caused our, us to basically not be able to go, do our transfers of appropriations, was the youth service and challenge course. We had only budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, sorry, yeah, four hundred and fifty thousand, and we ended up spending eight hundred and four thousand. So that is why we had to revise the budget because we didn't have enough, or we went over that ten percent, so. Then our next one that we went over was our equipment line item, this is in our capital outlet, excuse me, we went over that, which was because we had gotten some, then shelving units in the back, new AEDs, we had gotten new tables, I believe, for in here, and even like a drinking fountain, which was kind of a pricey equipment, and then also, you know, computers, hard drives, stuff like that, so. Then in our administration and payroll expenses, we went over in our staff salaries, excuse me, I didn't make a note, but that is, we've had lots of new hires, we've had, you know, we had, maybe just didn't budget correctly for raises, we've had some promotions this year, so I believe that's why we went over on that line item. Health and life insurance, we went over, but that's hard to gauge when we do our budgets because we don't know what kind of rates Blue Cross and Blue Shield is going to give us. And then again, when we get new hires, that's more money that we're giving to health savings And then we went over on our unemployment compensation and our workman's compensation, and again, that's, rates can change, new hires and claims on our Illinois Public Risk Fund if we have incidents with workman's comp, et cetera. There were a couple that went over just by a little bit in the assessors' budget, which is their travel expenses, their professional services and their employee insurance, which again, is just rates. And then last, I believe, in town fund, well, yeah, not quite, we went over in social services on the journeys, the road home. I believe they had a bill that they didn't submit the year prior, and we approved to make that payment in this year's budget, so that's why it went over the grant amount. Then we had adult and family counseling's budget, they went over a little bit in utilities. This was one of the first years that we allocated all the different departments and split all the utilities and telephone because usually town fund was acquiring the bulk of that, but Izzy and Paul, like allocated by the size of the building and how much each department is using, and that's, so this was our first year putting this in the budget, so it'll give us a better, a better idea of how things will look moving forward. They went over on their licenses and dues and any services, they went over a little bit in their core programs and supplies, but again, they're just putting up their new challenge course, so I'm sure some unexpected expenses came up. I know they got like an iPad and things like that, so, and then again with them, it was just the hospital and life insurance and for the same reason that I explained before. And that was all in town fund, so I think all the other ones, we were able to do the transfers of appropriations for Roden Bridge and General Assistance, which was passed at last month's board meeting.
The three, the three budgets, the GA and the Roden Bridge don't require any sort of amended budget, we just do line item transfers to balance off between those that we paid, we spent less than those, we spent more, and we just balance it off. Town fund, specific, I think basically it was three reasons that I think that we needed to do an amendment because we couldn't do the line item transfers. One, timing on the construction in the back there, again, some of the construction costs washed back to this year instead of being able to be paid last year or the year before. The second thing is, we did expand our services and our staff to meet those services. That was understood, that that would, we would take, that that would take a financial, an additional financial cost this year, but that should stabilize out going forward, is that we're not really, we're not beyond, the adult and family counseling, now she feels comfortable with that, we're just replacing the caseworker, we're, Ed has, our part-time's left, and we are adding the full-time in social services, so there's a half-a-person addition there, and upfront, there's no additions upfront, the person doing residential services probably, probably would move from within our, within our organization, within our staff at this point. So we should be stabilized staff-wise going forward. And then the final thing, final thing is, is we're just finding out a little bit more what it costs to be in this building and what the various things associate with it. Bottom line is, is financially, we're in sound position. We did spend more than we took in this year, and that will require us to be a little bit more. Uh, we did spend more than we took in this year and that will require us to be a little bit more, um, frugal next year because we wanna build the reserves back up, but we have adequate reserves and we're in financially in, in good position here. Um, and with the construction completing, that will take a lot of un, uh, uh, unexpected or unbudgeted items off the table. So I think we're, I think we're, we're in good shape here, um, and, um, and, and I think that we'll, uh, you know, things will be a little more stabilized going forward here. We won't be having as many construction as well as other staff and other issues that we're gonna be adding. Any questions for Erica? Any other questions for her?
No.
No. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, um, this was a tentative budget for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four town fund amended. Do we need to do, approve the?
No, we don't want to approve it, we want to accept it.
Accepted, yeah.
We have a public hearing.
That's right, we have a public hearing and then, then approve it next time. So I need a motion to accept the tentative budget for two thousand three, two thousand twenty-four town fund amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's move, seconded. Any other questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay, the last item here is approval to destroy closed session audio minutes. Um, and they're listed here. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Sue Ellen?
No, I did print this out. If you guys wanna copy, I forgot to pass it out. But, um, all of the minutes above the line have been, there's two requirements to, um, destroy the recordings of the meetings. The minutes have to have been approved and released. And the minutes, the meeting had to be over eighteen months old. So what we're doing tonight, the dates are here, is all these meetings above the line, we can approve to destroy the recordings of the meetings.
There any, well, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion here? This is standard administrative functioning where we, we get rid of the, uh, we get rid of the, we can, we have, we're actually required to get rid of the audios um, under those two, under those two constraints or those two requirements. And these meet those requirements, so, um, the, um, if it's, if, if this passes, those audios will be, will be destroyed. The closed, the written minutes will be retained.
All right, we have to go through the state to get rid of those, so.
Okay. Um, any, uh, any questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay, um, let's see, discussion, comments, any, any discussion or comments from the trustees here? No?
No.
God, we are such an efficient organization. Nobody's got anything to say. Okay, um, I will, I do wanna say, um, that Paul has been sort of, um, working with Izzy, bringing her up to speed, um, on, on, on the responsibilities of administrator. Um, we've been giving her a ton of stuff. She hasn't broken yet, so, um, we'll have to keep giving her stuff until she breaks, but.
No, no.
I think, I think, I think that Paul's been doing, uh, well, Paul has done a great job for us and is doing a great job preparing for a successor and, um, they make a great team. At some point, um, when Paul retires, either when our term, my, our term is up, or my term's up, or maybe even earlier, um, at that point, we will be looking to replace Izzy with a, a deputy administrator too. Okay? Okay.
Oh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I get a, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.